The last borrowing to finish up the current projects, so I'll hand it over to Jamie. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I have to say it looks quite a bit different when I came in than it did the last time I was here. So it looks like you're making quite a bit of good progress. So you should each have a hard copy of my presentation, and this is really just an update. These pages should look familiar to you as we've been embarking on this long-term plan of finance for quite some time now. But if you turn to page number two, the inside cover, we always like to start off talking a little bit about interest rates and market conditions. And as always, this is three snapshots of the same tax-exempt index. It's the BVAL curve, which stands for Bloomberg valuation. And what the top snapshot tells us is we're at the blue line. The yield curve is still pretty flat, not a whole lot different in year one than out there in year 30. So that's good. That means you're continuing to earn a pretty healthy investment rate on your construction fund and your other investments as well. And long-term borrowing rates continue to hover right around historic averages, so that's good as well. The middle snapshot just shows this index going back to 1993, and the bottom is same index, just focusing in on calendar year 2024 to present. So as you look at that lower right-hand corner, you can see that big spike upward when tariffs were supposed to take effect. And then you can see almost immediately things started to correct as there was a pause and further discussions and negotiations. So you can see it's been relatively steady over the last couple of weeks, which is also good. If we turn to page three, just a reminder in that top section, this will be an illustration for an additional $4 million borrowing to finish up the existing projects, which consists of the high school GISA project, the high school traditional bid project, the middle school parent loop, and the athletic facilities and lights. So that's what all is included in here. From the 2022 bond proceeds, it uses 405,000 plus another 361,000 of interest earnings on that issue, the 10 million that you already borrowed in 2023, and the 10 million that you already borrowed in 2024. This does not include any future elementary project, and of course assumes no state reimbursement due to the plan com moratorium that's been around for far too long. In that second section, nothing new there, just a reminder that we have to have reasonable expectations. Those are the key words with the IRS. You have to have reasonable expectations that you can spend 85% of the proceeds within three years, no problem. You're pretty far along with all your projects, and in fact, we'll be wrapping some of them up shortly. The second prong of that test, again, you have no problems with because you're so far along with your project. You already have entered those substantial binding obligations to spend at least 5% of this final borrowing. And the third prong is just that you proceed with due diligence. Section three, again, nothing new there. We have been very successful in breaking your borrowing plan up into pieces that are $10 million or less, and this final borrowing will be the same. It will carry tax-exempt bank-qualified interest rates, which are the lowest possible tax-exempt rate, and will get you the five-year call feature, which, again, you can't put a price on that today, but that flexibility in the future will be very, very important for refinancing opportunities, or if you needed to restructure, or if you had a windfall and you wanted to pay it down more quickly, that five-year call date will be important. In that last section, just a reminder of what a parameters resolution is, because that's the official vote and action you take to incur this $4 million. And so the reason you do that is to provide flexibility. It's just like all your other borrowings, nothing new here, but it gives us flexibility to enter the market on the best possible day, as opposed to being wed to a board meeting day, which might be, you know, one or two days a month, and those might not be the best days in the market. So parameters resolution has to contain a maximum principal amount, a maximum final maturity, a maximum principal amount per annual maturity, and a maximum interest rate. So as you recall from prior borrowings, the parameters resolution will be for about 20% more than the $4 million that we anticipate borrowing. Again, just to give flexibility so that I can resize once we get that winning bid from the competitive internet auction. Maximum interest rate, that's always high, again, for flexibility purposes. Need to be able to accommodate a premium bid, or a discount bid, or a par bid, so that maximum interest rate will be 6%, not because we think you're going to get 6%, but again, just to provide that flexibility. And then, once that parameters resolution is in place, we don't need any further board action. We can have the sale, and basically, as long as we fit within all the parameters, you'll be able to lock in those interest rates. If you turn to page four, you'll see your existing debt portfolio as it currently stands. Top half, as always, is gross debt service, meaning principal and interest, and the bottom half is net of some old grandfathered plan con reimbursement that you get on your share of the technical school bonds in column 11, as well as on your 2020 notes in column 14. So the net effect on your budget every year is column 18, and I'm going to call that $2.3 million a year is the net effect from your old debt service. And then that will carry over to column seven on page five, which is the overall summary of the plan. You see in column seven, there was your existing local effort before you started any of this. We've executed step one in the blue, we've executed step two in the red, and step three in the green. And what we're here to talk about this evening is step four in the orange, column four. So again, $4 million. You can see down below in column 14, a conservative estimate of what the debt service payments may look like on this $4 million. And just want to point out in column 18, even after you complete this issue, your debt servicing column 17 hits a high point of $2.64 million. Hopefully, we'll do a little better than that. And that's about $754,000 in column 18, lower than what you have in your budget since 2022. And that's that highlighted yellow box right under column six. You have almost 3.4 million in your budget for debt service, and, you know, so you still have some room, is the point, should you decide to pursue other projects after these are completed. If you look at page six, there's a sample motion at the top for your consideration. If you'd like to authorize the finance team to get the paperwork in order to complete this final $4 million borrowing via that competitive internet auction sale process. And the timeline at the bottom, tonight is the presentation to budget and finance. If you're so inclined to entertain the motion above this evening, we can have a draft of that parameters resolution I was talking about available for your June 9th meeting, and have that ready for you to actually vote on for your June 23rd meeting. And then, assuming that happens, we can be ready to have the sale and lock in interest rates as early as June 24th, which would put settlement at July 29th or thereabouts. So again, just a continuation of the plan that's been in place for quite some time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Can I ask a quick one?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to get some further understanding of column 18, and this, did you call it a little bit of extra? Can you just explain that a little bit further?
Sure. We're just simply comparing, and the number appears right under the label for column eight in that bright yellow box. In 2022, you had a line item in your budget. Some of your debt paid off before we started this plan. You roughly 3.4 million, rounding up slightly. So that's how much you had in your budget. And where we'll be at the end of the day after this $4 million is column 17. So you can see it hits out there in 2028, about $2,642,000, which is $753,000 less than what you've been budgeting. You've done a good job of keeping that budgeted number in place in anticipation of these projects, and you haven't quite used all of that up yet compared to where you were in 2022.
So each of those numbers in column 18 is, I don't know if surplus is the right word, it's extra every year?
Yes. It was.
Compared to the budget number.
It's eroding as the new debt service comes online.
Okay. So this year, it's 1.1.
Yes.
That we didn't spend?
Right.
Okay. And then it erodes?
Yes.
As the years go by?
And, you know, you've done a great job of being disciplined. I know it's hard because you have lots of other things going on in your regular operating budget. But to the extent you can continue to be disciplined and keep that 3.4 million, the highlighted yellow number in your budget, it will just provide you additional flexibility and options to consider whatever the next capital improvement need is that you want to undertake.
Thanks.
That number's going to be important later, ensuring Caleb's presentation when we talk about fund balance.
I assumed it would come up.
Any other questions for Jamie?
As long as Caleb understands it all, that's okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go over some just similar slides to what we seen last time. I added in a little bit with the Homestead-Farmstead and some things about fund balance. And then we'll get to, you know, basically, decision time on what we need to see for the final budget vote on June 9th. So again, this is a slide that we've seen many times, the general fund fund balance. I'll just skip over that a little bit for now. Here's the fund balance history that we talked about last meeting, dating back to 2006, and how the general fund fund balance has grown over the years. I just put a couple bullet points there with, you know, of why the increase in the fund balance year over year, and kind of just what we talked about was the first bullet point with the level debt service budgeting. You know, we have borrowed the past couple years now, so that has obviously shrunk our actual debt payment to the budget number. So that's one. And the second one is the unexpected real estate transfers and warehouses that have come on, especially in 2021 to 2022, we saw a huge jump in fund balance there of almost $4 million, about 3.5, 3.2.
So just to point out for the board, things that helped grow our fund balance were the gap in that debt service limit, and some unexpected things that we did not have control over. Okay, so those real estate transfers, you can't count on, but we'll take them. And warehouses as well are good for tax bases.
But not the view.
Correct.
And I just added this slide for, you know, fund balance purchases throughout this school year. Not all of these have gone through, but, you know, some are upcoming summer projects that were already approved. But when we say that we want to spend down fund balance, you know, we technically are, as a lot of these purchases have been approved throughout the year. So a lot of them were, you know, technology-based and maintenance-based, future capital projects. You can see the big one there at the bottom, the James Byrd roof. That's going to be done this summer to the tune of 1.4 million.
That's special education curriculum.
Yep.
For fund balance, 40,000. With the possibility of federal Department of Education funding, would that increase our payment to require us to pay more into?
So my understanding would be that that's curriculum that we're choosing to purchase for our own special ed kids that isn't like mandated by the state, other than that we have a curriculum? So to answer your question, Fred, not directly to my mind, because federal monies for us come through the title programs. So if we're using title money to purchase curriculum, then yes. But currently, we've not seen decreases in the title funding that we're getting. And we're told that there won't be unless it becomes a grant block to the state, and then that can get a little bit muddy from what the state decides to do with it. So right now, that title money's coming right from the federal government to us, and that does not look like it's changed as of yet. However, if that formula or that delivery method changes to go through the state in a block setting, we will not have, I'm not confident that we're going to get what we got before, as the state will have some ability to direct those funds the way they want.
So will we, so will we be responsible for those curriculums?
We're always going to have to refresh our curriculum from time to time, Fred, depending on the needs of the students. So curriculum comes on a cycle mostly. So, you know, for example, you may do English department at the high school this year, social studies the next, science, math, and then, you know, you rotate it through purchasing and updating curriculum on a cycle. Okay, so I can't speak to exactly whether this is an outlier that will be reoccurring, but we won't be updating special ed curriculum all the time, to my understanding, Fred.
No, everything, everything's-
Pulled that out of fund balance, probably because we did not have it budgeted in the special ed department's budget.
Correct.
Why didn't we have it in the budget for special education, if we knew we were getting the money?
Well, they might have just come out, or like, sometimes things come up during the year that are needed by a department, and if they don't have it in their current budget, that's when they have this, so they have a fund balance item there listed on the fund balance as special ed curriculum. So if they don't have money in their budget, and they, there's a need for it.
Sometimes, Fred, the needs can vary. You know, if we get new students in, we get more students in. You know, $40,000 is a lot of money. $40,000 of curriculum maybe doesn't get you as much as one might think. You know, so I can ask Mr. Eastman, you know, specifically what we got with that. But it's an outlier that we have to make to meet IEPs and, you know, our due diligence with special ed students.
Can I just ask a question? What's the difference between the curriculum, the regular curriculum, and the special education, like that that comes out of fund balance and not the curriculum budget?
There's two listed there. So there's a curriculum materials and a special ed curriculum. So again, if there's something not stated in the, or not in the curriculum budget that might be needed, that's brought to the board to add a fund, general fund fund balance.
And the reason those two-
Exist.
Money exists is because these things come up.
Correct.
And it's, you know, it's in every, it's an, I've noticed it's an annual thing, especially on the technology side, to where, you know, we're constantly paying, you know, for new Chromebooks or laptops out of the fund balance, where if that's become an annual thing, it should probably be incorporated into the technology budget. So it's not a fund balance expense each year.
And I think that speaks a little bit to how we've kind of like budgeted moving forward. It's been kind of like a tight budget for individual buildings. We've used the fund balance difference in, you know, like the debt service difference, in part, into fund balance, where then, as these, you know, as these, I won't call them crises, as these unforeseen things come up, that's where we've been pulling things, and that's why we have it under fund balance, or, you know, a line item in our fund balance.
We won't be looking at this every year. I have no problem with this for 40,000. I'm just wanting to prepare for, if we don't get the money, is this going to be, is this a separate, we're paying for something?
So the federal monies are title, which usually go for Title I, which is specifically to help with reading and math. We purchase, purchase, I'm sorry, we hire and fund a lot of our reading specialists with that money. Title II and Title III deal with professional development, English language learners. Title IV is-
Title IV, we historically have transferred our Title IV into Title I to help cover the cost of the salaries and benefits for our reading specialists.
So it's going to be dominoes, Fred. If the federal monies change, okay, then we have to fill in the gap, we will. So Title and federal monies aren't really related directly to special education funding. That comes from the state. If you remember that flat line that's always at the bottom of the things, that's where we get a lot of our, you know, support from outside the district funding streams, not so much at the federal level. Okay? Does that make sense?
Not really, but I understand.
Yeah, we only use the federal money at schools that qualify for Title I, so it's only Nancy Grayson, James Byrd, and the intermediate school. And we use the lion's share of that money to pay salary and benefits for our reading specialists and our math coach. And then we have one teaching position that is classified as a class-size reduction position that we used money for that as well. And then we use a small amount of our federal funds to pay for iReady, which is a math and reading program that we use with our students who are in our title programs. So that's totally separate from the fund balance purchase for the special ed curriculum that's listed here.
So accurate fund, you may have noticed, Fred, over time, our special ed budget has ballooned from, and that's because we weren't budgeting appropriately. Okay, so it was like six, one half dozen the other. We weren't funding those, you know, within the general fund budget accurately. So we were having to more, you know, when these things come up, pull from the fund balance. You may remember, we used to do like individual placements. We would, you know, like vote on, you know, okay, that's because we didn't have that in our budget, Fred. Okay, so we've expanded those slots, as an example, so that we don't have to come back to the board to say, this needs to be approved. We would be paying for those out of fund balance. So it's really about accurate, good forecasting of building budgets and department budgets that reflect reality, okay, so that we're not coming out of fund balance in the future.
Okay.
So this is the state property tax reduction, also known as Homestead-Farmstead. This is good news. The state allocation went up about $215,000, $20,000 there from last year. So you can see that equates to, for the taxpayer, about a $35 increase for next year off their taxes.
So it's an increase in their decrease.
Correct. So they saw a similar increase or decrease last year as well. I believe 23, 24 was 1.1 million. So this is good news that the state is funding this and increasing it year over year. I also linked there, there's some more- I also linked there, there's some more information if you're ever interested in reading more about it. There's a link up there, too. I just want to highlight the expense drivers. You know, we've been through this. I don't want to, you know, hold on too much, but, you know, the personnel needs of increasing enrollment, the 10 staff, the 10 staff that we had listed on there to the tune of about 910,000. Medical insurance increase is 11%, which equates to about 842,000. And then our cyber charter enrollment is about a $665,000 increase.
I have one more question about the cyber charter.
Cyber charter? Sure.
The child, the parents enrolled a child in the cyber charter. Do we pay upfront?
They bill us throughout the school year.
Monthly.
So, if he only goes, he goes two or three, he or she goes just a few months? You only get billed for that two or three months?
Correct.
Okay.
That's just showing the healthcare increase history dating back to 2013, 2014. You can see the average there at the bottom was about a 5.28% over the past 10 years now. So, the past two years, we've been hit hard on healthcare, kind of out of the norm with a 15%. The current budget that we're living in, 11% for the next year's budget. Just going to highlight the tax implications to the taxpayers again. I have the three scenarios still listed on there of the 5.3, the 4.5, and the 4%. So, the 5.3 is listed on there, generates about 1.85 million in revenue. And then the 4.5 with 1.59. And then the 4% about 1.41. And highlighting, there's the three scenarios we have listed on there, the four, the four and a half, and the 5.3. So, really, it's down to, you know, decision time of what the board would like to see, the majority of the board would like to see for the June 9th meeting, for the final budget to be passed. So, if there, you know, there's some more discussion, some questions, I definitely need some direction on what to provide for June 9th.
And I just want the board to go into this discussion, eyes wide open, that the conditions that helped build our fund balance are changing. Our debt services is rising to meet the budget number, and we had windfall events that helped pad that fund balance. Okay? So, you know, as we talk about that, I don't want people to think that that 17 million that's in there is going to stay there. And if you go back to the 2 billion that we spent so far, okay? Okay? So, remember, we were super frugal by not taking care of things in the district. And that list is things that we're taking care of that are coming out of fund balance. Okay? Yeah, and we grew it by not addressing those things, maybe as they should have been. Okay? So, you know, eyes wide open when we go into this budget discussion about the fund balance and how it got to where it was and where it may be headed. Okay? Thank you.
So, to get some direction for Caleb on where next steps. So, the last time we met with the Budget and Finance Committee, it appeared that the consensus was maybe middle of the road. People could live with the 4.5% was the majority. Did anyone's opinion change, whether if they wanted to do the 4.5? Do we need to have this discussion again to see where board members are, to make sure that Caleb knows, you know, how to plan, present, and that so there's no surprises come June, when it's time to vote, and, you know, it might be 5, 4, 8, 1, 9, 0. So, just putting it out there.
I told you I won't be here. I'll be gone June 9th, so I won't get a vote. Would you know where I stand?
Thank you.
So, can I have a second? So, when we were in the, one of the recent contract negotiation meetings with faculty, the Teacher Association rep was there and provided us a little summary of sort of where the district is financially as a way, I mean, they, you know, they had their reasons for doing that. But it was, one of the points, and I really wish I had the numbers on this, and I just haven't, I guess, had the energy to do it. But one of the points that they made is that Shippensburg School District, compared to neighboring school districts, has a far lower tax burden in terms of property tax funding schools. And I wish I had the hard numbers here to like sort of demonstrate that, but I think it's worth pointing out. I mean, it seems, you look at like a 5.3% increase, and it's like, wow, it's a lot. And I get it, like, that seems like a lot, and we're increasing the tax burden, definitely. But relative to our neighboring districts, like, we are still low. Our tax burden and our funding of schools on a per capita basis is still low. And I feel like we're still playing catch-up. And we sort of see that all around us with issues that can be addressed with, you know, sort of more staff or, you know, better facilities or whatever. So, I know it's not popular, it's not ever popular to vote for increased taxes, but, I mean, the reason I'm doing this is because I care about the quality of education of our students, which supports the entire community, makes the entire community better. And I feel like it is our responsibility to do as much as we can to fund, to fund that endeavor as best we can. And that's why I am 100% in support of raising taxes to the index.
I feel like there's an expectation that the professors speak one right after the other. I'm going to get on my little soapbox for a little while first, and it's just so sad that in a 70-ish million dollar budget, the only thing we have control over is about, I don't know, a few million dollars. And that's, that's just not a system that's fun to be functioning under, and that, there's nothing we can do about it. That's the, that's what we have to live with. And I think, just similar to what I said last session, I mean, we're choosing either to raise taxes or deficit spend, so both stink. But I see the raising taxes to the index as more future-looking and investing more in the future and not pulling out of our savings account so that we have something in the future. So, that's just sort of where I stand, is I choose to be a little more forward and future-looking in all of this. And I guess I'm choosing between the two evils that, a little bit, raising the taxes to the index a little more is less painful than spending out of the budget, out of the fund balance, so that we have that rainy day fund for the future, because that list is only going to get bigger of what we have spent. And we have no idea what the future holds, as Mr. Scott pointed out. Like, we could be losing state or federal funding and have to make up for a bunch of stuff, and if our fund balance is getting depleted, that's going to be painful.
You're saying 5.3?
I am, as kindly as I possibly can.
It's a tough subject. It always is. I still feel the same as I did last time we discussed it. I mean, we have, you look over almost 20 years, and it's been, you know, 788,000 over a year. I guess the goal is, I guess when I got on, it felt like the goal was to do a balanced budget. So, maybe is that not what our goal is or not, I guess? Because if we're trying to do a balanced budget, you could, you know, say, hey, we can hone that in because we have almost 20 years' information to say we've been 700, almost 800,000 over every year. So, we could shave a little of that. Whether we choose to do that or not on a regular basis, yeah, I think because of the fluctuation of the percentages, I don't think there's many years we would pick to do that. But after the soaking we gave the taxpayers last year, you know, if we can shave a percent off that or something like that, I think is a, you know, I think they deserve it. Those are my feelings.
So, just quickly, just to make sure I have all this, that one, the one slide you had, Caleb, we spent about 2.3 million out of fund balance
Yes.
For this year, or it's going to come out like a project for the roof this summer. So, I mean, that's real. Like, that's really money coming out of the fund balance. And then, even in all of our scenarios we have, they have a, what's the cheapest one? 1.7 million?
Correct.
So, best case scenario, looking at this, you have 1.7 coming out. So, I look at it and say, if we have 17 million is what it says right now, and you take out, it's 3.7 million could come out, just roundabout. That's even if, that's if we tax to the index. So, your fund balance could drop. And I don't know, I don't like increases either. I don't at all. I guess my other question is, and we haven't had much of any discussion on this, I guess I've been kind of waiting for a couple of weeks, and nobody said anything, but is the board fully committed to all 10 of those personnel positions? Or are we just going through because we're talking about saving money on taxes? But like, and I'm not saying that any of those things have to come off for me to be happy, but I'm just curious. Like, we've had lengthy discussions, I feel like, every year on personnel additions since I've been on the board when we hit this time of year, and there's been next to nothing this time. So, look at that and say, if we're not raising to the index and we're kind of shorting ourself because we know we're going to lose money from debt service that we were paying ourselves, like, does all 10 of those positions need to be there? Is there something that doesn't have to be there? I'm just trying to get some dialogue amongst my peers.
Is that a question?
Just, my team of nine, I'm just looking to see if that is, if there's everything on there, is like, yep, that's a hard yes, has to be there. Because I always hear about balancing budget. Mike's right. Like, we always hear, if we got a balanced budget, we want to operate a balanced budget. But I don't know how we would ever balance our budget if we add 10 positions and then not increase to our full capabilities. I mean, in addition to knowing that, like, we're doing much-needed renovations to our buildings, like, we can't have roofs leaking, you know, at James Bird. Like, that's not, we can't do that. We couldn't have a middle school that didn't have additions because it was something that needed done for a long time. And again, I'll said it two weeks ago, I've probably said it 10 times, just go back to the history of lack of increase, like, they just, it's, it's like, that's tough to look at when you see a 2.2 index and you don't go to that. And then think like, oh, here we are. Because, and it's not a fair system. There's no doubt, it's not a fair system, which we don't have control over, the system that dictates how schools are funded. Like, we can't change any of that. I wish I could, but if you're a homeowner in Pennsylvania, in Shippensburg, you're paying property tax. So...
I'm at 4.5%.
Mr. K, would you, I don't, in your comments, you didn't refer to where?
4.5 would be in the ballpark, yes.
And not to interrupt the board's discussions, but, you know, the slide, you know, I, it's, yes, it's 2.3, but it's a good, like, it's good. We're updating facilities that were desperately needed, updating. And I don't think it's going to stop here. I think it's going to keep continuing down the road.
You mean, we'll have to make more repairs?
Definitely. And updates, yes. I know Nancy Grayson's roof is going to need to be done here soon as well.
Well, we don't, we still don't know what the state's going to give us, right or wrong.
Correct.
Yep. Like I said before, we take money from the taxpayers, we can't give that back. So, until I know what, until I'm more comfortable what the state's going to give us, I can't do any more than that.
Is this best case scenario, though, flat?
Yeah, there's a little bit of an increase in BEF and, you know, basic ed and special ed. The big swing could be the cyber charter reform, wherever that may land. And that's still really in the early stages. There's a lot of bills being passed back and forth.
We expect it to heat up in June?
Yeah, June 2nd, I think their meeting or...
Again, after we are legally obligated to have approved a budget. Whereas they're not.
Fair.
Double standards everywhere.
Levi, to your question about the personnel, based on what I've heard for the justification for those personnel, like, I mean, I'm supportive of all of those. The only one that has a little question mark, little cartoon question mark over my head is the, is number eight there, the business teacher. I mean, I figure we don't necessarily need them for this coming year, but I like the idea of having them in the budget, and maybe we look to hire. I'm not sure what administration's plan here would be.
We are voting on that tonight.
Pending?
Board approval.
Board approval of the budget.
Voting on?
Business teacher?
Like, whether to list that job?
So, we've conducted interviews and selected a candidate? Because of the hiring curve?
Thank you for stopping me, Steph. Appreciate that.
But again, with the giant caveat of pending board approval, and the candidate was aware that that is part of, in order to get out of some of the hirings of these, in order to get candidates on the timing of these things, we have to get out in front of, or we don't have candidates.
So, the candidate that's on the agenda is an internal candidate. So, how does that work with, like, we're already paying this person, so do we?
So, there's a question of?
Essentially, that 110,000 becomes replacing the person that we're, we've internally slid into this business managed, business teacher slot.
Correct. You know, whether, you know, whether or not we replace that is a question. You know, administratively, it makes sense. You know, we would be, I think, downgrading, you know, opportunities for students within the buildings if we did not in important areas.
Right. So, either way, we're going to have to spend that 110,000. I mean, there might be a little bit of a lag because, I don't know, I'm not a budget person, but you, we're spending that 110,000 somewhere.
If we replace that position, then yes.
Any additional comments? Anyone else want to have anything to add?
Did you get enough information, Caleb, or not?
Right now, I have at least five. I have three at 5.3 and two at 4.5, and I know Mr. Scott will not be here on June 9th.
I have three at 5.3 and two at 4.5, and I know Mr. Scott will not be here on June 9th.
So is that a, to ask for some more?
So, so the way, the way it looks right now, 4.5 is, is what can pass? Are there other, you know, there's, there's members who haven't chimed in? If you're interested in?
I'm at 4.5. If that's what, if you want my vote, if that's what you're after.
Well, I mean, we, we need to get it on the, you know, we have to get the proposal for the 9th, Jim, so it's helpful.
Thanks. And if any other discussion or questions come up after this meeting, you know, up until that first week in June, I'm open if anyone wants to come in and meet or anything like that, just send me an email. Be happy to.
When does the state have to have their budget in? When does the state have to have their budget in?
Whenever they want.
Let me rephrase that. When are, when is the state supposed to have their budget?
June 30th.
30th.
We could be back in school in the fall before their budget's done.
Sometimes.
Which has happened before.
Usually, yeah.
All right. Any other budget item comments? Okay.
Hey, Mr. Stevens. Can I see you in a minute, please? Tired of this thing dropping down.
They make medication for that food.
What do you do? What are you supposed to do that time? Oh, that's all you got to do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're just going to have a quick personnel executive session regarding personnel before the meeting.
Okay, you hit it, okay. Does it have sound in it? Oh, okay. That's we were just gonna verify the sound worked.
Hello, welcome back to the Shippensburg area school district committee of the whole. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. August.
Thank you, two presentations tonight. We'd like to start with our friends from G Blues. Ms. Holly, if you want to take us through. Okay.
Hi, my name is Stefano Blount. And my brother right over there is Leo. I'm a fourth grader at Graceville Law's Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Colette Fairchild. I am also a fourth grader at G Blues. Thanks for letting us come to share our experiences, our experiences at G Blues Camp 2025.
Last Thursday and Friday, we went to Camp Pen Waynesboro. It was pouring down rain, but we still had a lot of fun.
At camp, at camp, we visited several different stations during the two days we were there. We learned about flowers, bees, birds, and water.
At camp, we visited, oh, we learned about color and nature, designed our own ecosystem, and even learned to fly fish.
Before, before camp, we met with our camp family and camp families and created posters and models about different countries. My camp family's country was Israel. I learned that Israel has a wall that is important to many people.
My camp family country is Brazil. I learned that Brazil has one of the biggest waterfalls in the world.
My, my three favorite things about camp are I get to hang out with friends, the stations are engaging and fun, and I get to know other kids in my camp family.
My favorite stations at camp were we had cool stories, smores, and hot chocolate at our campfire. It was fun staying overnight at camp. We had delicious food made by the parent volunteer.
Please watch our slide show about camp.
Thanks again for letting us come tonight to share our camp experience.
Can you guys sing the camp song? Do you remember it?
What do you think of Camp Pen now you're here? Don't you think you wanna come another year? Talk about it, don't be scared. Little camp up on a hill. Camp Pen Waynesboro, P A.
I'm only, I'm only this much offended that I wasn't invited this year, but I can only assume it's because the last time I was there, I helped make pancakes and they must've sucked or something. I haven't gotten an invitation since.
I'm glad you learned the hardest possible way to fish. Next on the agenda is kind of an information item. The special ed consortium that we belong to in Cumberland County works together to find efficiencies and basically try to save money by collaborating and sharing spots. So the, the next kind of step to this is working on transportation. So every district faces transportation issues of getting individual students to their programs. Okay, so within the consortium, there are different classrooms in different buildings in different districts. So those students often are transported individually by individual school districts. The, the idea in the consortium was that if Shippensburg and Big Spring have a student who are going to a program at Northern, then we should cooperate on the transportation. Okay, easier said than done, because special ed and McKinney Vento Transportation change frequently and are difficult to coordinate between six districts. Okay, so we've always had this dream that our transportation coordinators and our special ed coordinators could all get in a room and work out a giant map of who's going where, when, to try to come up with the most efficient routes. Good on paper, hard to pull off in reality because they're very, very busy, busy people. And as I said, there are a lot of changes. So a company called Blue Cap stepped forward and said in conversations with, with the consortium, we can provide that level of routing and collaboration if you give us the list of, of students that you have that are difficult transportations and, and they can do the work. Now, here's the thing, we're not paying money upfront. Okay, so that's important to know. The model that we landed on after several meetings was that we would sign an MOU with Blue Cap. We would provide them with a list of our students. Every district in the consortium would do the same thing. They would create a template, kind of a proof of concept that this works. But in order for us to move forward, the MOU would allow us, if we had a legitimate transportation need, we could use Blue Cap as another provider. So that's really what is gonna be coming in the future is an MOU to allow us to use Blue Cap as a provider with the idea that we collaborate within the consortium to save money and, and more importantly, for the kids involved, try to cut down on their travel time. Okay, you know, I, I've seen numerous times when, when buses and vans would cross from different districts, not, not good use of, of resources. So I wanted to put that on the board's radar, that, that we're in these talks, that, that we're waiting on an MOU that does not commit us to anything other than another possible vendor to use when, when we might need one. Right, any questions on that?
Is it just a, do they just do logistics or are they an actual?
So they're, they're, they're gonna do both. Right, so, so the, the, the transportation piece is kind of standard. What, what is the next level with this is the coordination piece. But, but it's not here yet, but I wanted to kind of show you and tell you the conversations we've been having in the consortium along these lines.
Would this be a separate entity that would enter, engage with five or six or four or five?
So what, what could?
They would be solely set up the routes and take care of the kids. So we would hire, like we would a Boyo or Freeze or somebody.
Correct, but, but offering efficiencies, you know, within the consortium.
So we would be lightening the load on Freeze, Boyo.
Theoretically, for some of these harder, you know, if we have a McKinney Vento kid who's in York and Big Spring has a McKinney kid in York, then there's savings in us sharing that ride down to York to get those kids. You know, so there, there are hard to fill, they're hard to fill transportation needs from time to time, but, but also efficiencies that we think we might be able to pull off within the consortium ourselves. Again, this, this is just literal, literal baby steps into an idea of a more coordinated consortium transportation, you know, model. Any other questions?
Such a thing, we need to keep our transportation people informed along the way. So it's not a surprise or they think, yeah, that's a good thing or.
Yeah, and, and again, this is clearly, you know, clear proof of concept kind of, kind of thing first, you know, kind of looking at a pilot to see what we can do. You know, it's, it's not, it's not intended to, to, you know, necessarily replace, but all of our transportation providers are stretched from time to time. Uh, next up, moving on to facilities. Jason. Oh, sorry, question.
Did we skip 2B?
Did we skip 2B? Oh, we did skip, sorry. Um, another item, Professor, I'm sorry, a staff member from Shippensburg University reached out to me several times via email to ask about placing Narcan, Noxone. Noxone distribution box is not only within the Shippensburg community, but within our schools. I wanted to put it on the board's radar as well, you know, to have any discussion to see if there's any, any, it's free, free cost, you know, but it, but it is something that I, I would like the board's knowledge of before we move forward on it. So there's kind of a picture of it, what, what it would look like, you know, community members that, that may have a need would be able to access that, that, you know, should, should an emergency arise. So.
To me, this is a no brainer. Noxone saves lives. I've had to speak at the funerals of kids who used to be my scouts when I was a scout master because the people around them didn't have Noxone. And if they had had Noxone, that, that kid would be alive. There, it doesn't, you can't harm someone with Noxone if they're, they're having an episode where they're, they've faced overdose for whatever reason, and it's not just because they're using drugs that are illegal. It could be like grandma took too many of her pain medications and so it's, you, you put it in like you're doing Afrin or any other kind of nasal allergy relief kind of thing, and it, and it stops the overdose immediately and saves a person's life. It's, 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 it's one of the reasons that overdose deaths are coming down right now is that Noxone and Narcan is more available. I, I, I have it in my office, I have it at home. We should all have it. It's, it's really a lifesaver.
It's like a newspaper thing, so do you have to have quarters on you?
No, I, I think that's just the style they're going for, but you're correct. Is there any other thoughts or concerns with this, so I can respond back to the gentleman?
I guess like how, like where would this be placed? Like how, how are students getting access to this? How is it being?
So I, I believe those would be details we would work out. The, the one place that was mentioned in the email exchange was like in the faculty lounge, you know, to have access to it there. You know, we, we certainly wouldn't, wouldn't want it outside necessarily the building, but under regulation within the building, you know, where kids would know where it is and, and the, the community might know where it is as well.
It's, it's great to have it. You know, police officer had to use it a couple of times. But here in the school, we assume any liability? If we have these boxes within the school?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can double check, Fred.
Would you please?
Yep.
There are, there are, what's the name of the laws?
Good Samaritan laws.
Good Samaritan laws in place where if you, if you make an attempt to say, I mean, it's the same kind of thing, like if you saw a car crash on the side of the road, you try to do your best and someone was injured or whatever, there, there are laws to protect. And so the same would apply here. And you, if someone, you think someone is having an overdose event and you've put Noxone in their nose and it was a seizure or something else, it's, it's completely harmless. You can't harm someone.
Well, I know about the harming, but I was saying if someone has it, we have it in the school, if something happens and we don't, don't use or a teacher not get to it, could we be liable?
I'll go check on that, Fred, and, and I'll confirm, you know, the best location with the board as well.
The person who uses it has it covered.
I'd rather have it handy and then worry about the ramifications on something like that later. That's just my thought.
How freely is it available in that situation where it could get stolen, like people could just go for it?
So we would put it in strategic locations. I would work with the individual to, to, to see what the vision is and come back to the board with locations for them to give the okay to. Any other questions on that? All right, thank you, Dr. Lim, but I skipped over that. Jason, Mr. Herb, can you come forward for facilities? Jason from Site Logic is gonna give us a construction update.
Hello. Jason Herb with Site Logic, here to give a progress report on the high school, middle school additions. We're gonna go through the site work activities, the middle school addition and the high school additions. Next one. Starting with the site work, we're progressing, moving along with the stormwater activities, installing the storm piping and the inlets in the middle there. We're continuing with the sidewalk installations along Everly. And the far right picture is the start of the stormwater retention basin that is located on the corner of Everly and West King. The middle school drop off loop. The middle school drop-off loop, uh, again, we're progressing with the stormwater piping and inlets along the road. The, uh, in the pictures there, the, the pins that you see is the stakeout for the curbing that, uh, is in the process of being poured, um, so that's progressing very well. We're actually out to the front of the middle school now with some of the grading activities. The high school STEM lab addition, uh, the exterior brick masonry is, um, complete. Uh, that just wrapped up, uh, the end of last week. The, uh, cast stone around the perimeter, as you can see, the, the sort grayish stone, uh, is wrapping up, and, uh, we're gonna get that brick washed down and start the installation of the windows very shortly. On the inside, we're progressing with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens. Uh, we also started the block fill or the primer of the CMU walls, and we first coated those walls as well. Out in the hallway, they did the, uh, metal framing and the drywall for the locker banks. That's progressing. The music room addition is the second in the sequence. The, uh, brick masonry has started and is progressing, looks like a big tent out there right now because of all the rain that we've had. Um, they put the plastic up in, in order not to lose days, so we can continue with that, uh, installation. Uh, next slide, the, the roofing is complete, it is dried in, and we are starting with, uh, dockwork installation overhead. Uh, they also started, uh, sealing the walls as well with the block fill. Over at the middle school, the, uh, band room addition, the exterior CMU walls are complete, the, uh, wood blocking for the doors and windows is complete, and the, uh, roofing or the drying in has, uh, started. The interior, um, didn't have any pictures, there's no, uh, mechanical roughens started yet, but, uh, that should be, uh, progressing here over the next couple of weeks. As far as a schedule overview, we did do an update through the month of April, and, uh, the STEM lab addition on the high school is showing roughly 11 days behind. Uh, that's an improvement of 17 days from last month, so we're slowly progressing to improve that, um, that, uh, lost time, and at this point, we have no issue with making, meeting the substantial completion date, uh, so the, for the start of school. The remaining additions for the high school music and the, and the band rooms are tracking The application summary, we, through the month of April, were 40% invoiced from the contractors, a little over 50% complete. Cost issues, uh, hasn't changed since last month, uh, we're still looking at about $244,000 worth of contingency money left. Project challenges, uh, water meter vault, um, there was a design change in the water meter vault, um, a few months ago with, uh, the borough. Uh, we, we got some, uh, cost pricing from, uh, the general contractor and reviewed it, uh, with SiteLogic, uh, KNW engineers, EI associates, the architect. Um, we could not agree in, on a final price. We felt their excavation costs were above and beyond what was legitimate, so we issued them a construction change directive which, uh, has them proceeding with that work on a time and material basis. Um, we, we need to do that in order to release the vault, so it's here on time before the start of school. Any questions on the high school or middle school additions? Okay, the high school stadium project?
Jason, if I can just interrupt you for a second, just to point out, this is like pro bono bonus things you're doing for us because you guys aren't directly involved necessarily with the stadium.
Stadium, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that.
I was asked to, uh, give a brief update on, on the stadium. The field scoreboard is connected, um, speakers are, uh, installed and in the process of being, uh, integrated with the press box. The play clocks are, are here, um, the mounting posts for the play clocks are currently being, uh, designed by the play clock manufacturer. Uh, once that's completed, uh, they'll get those ordered and, uh, have those installed. Track painting and, uh, striping will be scheduled after the remediation that was discussed last meeting. Um, the little depression that was over by the scoreboard has been, um, uh, remediated, and I'll go over that in the next slide here. We're still anticipating the completion of the, uh, track in early July. The challenges, uh, as I mentioned, the track depression, um, over the course of the past couple of weeks, the area was excavated by the general contractor, um, under the, uh, guidance of KNW engineers, which is a civil engineer, and Kleinfelder Associates, which is a geotech, um, engineer. They found trapped groundwater, um, about four or five feet down, um, in which they added a French drain to the nearest inlet to release that pressure of that groundwater. We're still, the backfill was completed and monitored by the, uh, geotech engineer. The blacktop was patched, and we're currently in a two-week curing period before the, uh, synthetic, uh, synthetic track patch is, uh, completed. There was also a small depression found along the 30-yard line. Um, the general contractor has contacted the turf contractor to, uh, review and provide some remediation. I have not heard any update on that since, uh, last week. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. You sent out a letter, an email, telling us about the depression. Uh, there was a letter, attachment.
There will, there will be a letter coming from?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. It, it took me a second, Fred. Um, so, there, there is a bit of a discrepancy on, you know, the, the, who's responsible for it? Um, the KNW engineers sent a memo that I forwarded to the board, um, indicating that it had to do more with the fill, uh, area, um, and it was not due to unforeseen circumstances. Um, the contractor is under the impression that it was due to unforeseen circumstances, so we, we're gonna need to hash that out, um, to figure out, you know, the best way forward. So, we're, we're still going to have those conversations. We have a meeting on Thursday, I believe, is our standing construction meeting.
Yes.
Um, where, you know, we'll, we'll sort that out, uh, and, and, you know, come, come with a resolution.
Do we, we're not gonna, we, we're not gonna pay him everything we owe him until we get that resolution.
So, cur- currently, the costs are $18,000 to this point. I just got that information today, um, of costs, and, and then there's some additional costs that, that will go on top of that, um, once they finalize it. So, there is this idea of who owns this problem, um, and we're gonna have to sort it out, Fred.
As long as we don't pay him everything before it's done.
Yeah, we'll go through a process to figure it out.
All right.
Any other ques- questions for Jason?
This may be a really dumb question. Play clock. How's that different from the scoreboard?
Uh, play clock is like your, you know, what it is in football is a 30-second clock.
So, it's, it's the, how much time you have? Okay. It's, that sits down on the field.
Yep.
Okay, for football. Okay, I got it. I just wondered why we were paying for, okay. I told you it was a dumb question.
That wasn't a dumb question. I asked the same question.
Anything else for Jason?
I mean, we had a really spicy conversation in facilities about those play clocks.
Thanks a lot, Jason, for coming, appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. Uh, Jason, before you go, one question. Are we, it's been raining a lot, I have noticed. Um, are, how are we tracking for completion on, on time?
Yeah, we're still tracking to be done, uh, as originally planned, even with some of the days of, of rain. Um, as long as it doesn't keep up, obviously, but, uh, typically, your spring is a little bit wet, and, uh, that's usually considered through the process.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, I, I assume that's where we were, I just wanted to ever.
Right now, there's no issues.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next up from the, uh, facility committee, um, several items that have gone through and, and have been moved forward. Um, one is the press box, uh, installation of, um, a cooling heating unit, you know, for $3,990. That is, uh, to protect the equipment that's in there, uh, from overheating. Um, it's been run through facilities and, and recommended to be moved forward to the board. Um, any comments on that, uh, Dr. Goats, uh, Mr. Nagle, Mr. Carey?
It's just a mini split heat pump system, and it'll give air conditioning and heat, and I think it was $39.90.
Yep.
Two fixes my air conditioner, so.
Uh, there's a fence quote, uh, that contains two, and, and I'll, again, maybe lean on, uh, Mr. Nagle or Dr. Goats. Uh, there, there's two real options here. One is to tear down the existing fence, um, and replace it completely, uh, with a brand-new fence. That comes with a price tag of $106,200. The other option is, well, one that we would recommend putting in, which is to widen the four-foot fence to a 800, or eight-foot fence for a total of $810. So, I don't know.
I answer the gate.
Oh, they're, right, they're two separate things.
What are you talking about replacing the fence?
So, in facilities, uh, the, the entire fence around?
Outside fence.
Yeah, the, the metal fence around the stadium.
It was a wish list item that's, somebody brought up.
I think it needs some gate work, but other than that, I think we'll be all right.
It was $106,000.
$810 sounds good to me.
Yeah, that was for the, that was for the gate.
Yeah, that's for the widening of the gate. Again, this is FYI information coming out of the facilities committee.
Correct.
For the full board to consider.
That was just, uh, the, the perimeter fencing that we were talking about was, there's no recommendation from facilities. It was just something that, you know, we had a list of items that we thought we could raise money for in the future or potentially, I don't, not quite sure where that came from, but it did come up in the meeting.
I think Darryl, I think Darryl was looking, looking ahead. If we wanted it, he had it.
Okay.
That was all, it was, it was just looking ahead. But is the 800, that just, that's the gates?
That's just one gate, the widening of the gate by the, the?
Four-foot.
Four-foot.
That was to facilitate band entry onto the field.
$800?
So, is it, is it more than just band? Is it like food trucks and ambulances and that kinda thing that could potentially come through there? Is that why it's?
It's gonna be down by the scoreboard, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Yeah, let's see, the answer is.
It's basically a banned entrance, so I don't think you can get a truck through there.
I believe the good news to that was, didn't they have to remove some of that because of where the damage was? So, they have to put something back in anyhow.
That was the silver lining to the settlement piece, was they had to pull out those, that fence area anyway.
And we're still $100? After that, or we got there?
Uh, the labor's 400 and the gate is 410, Fred.
But they're gonna replace the gate from the, from the settlement, right? So, it'll only half, should be half of that. They're gonna replace four feet and we're gonna replace four feet, because the four-foot gate there before.
So, I think they would just put back a four-foot gate? If someone can help me out, I'm not a gate expert.
I'm not quite sure. I don't remember exactly what Darryl said, but we're gonna end up with one eight-foot gate?
Right, I mean.
Eight-foot gate, but they.
Or 810 bucks, or 800.
Well, Fred's point was, they would have had to?
Put the four foot.
Foot the bill and put back in and replace what was there, so if they're already doing that, why are we paying that much installation?
I, I understand.
I mean, we can take it back through facilities and have another conversation. Uh, the facilities wanted to bring it forward to, to talk about, so.
$800. The, the gate?
It's $800. If you wanna go back and try to save 200, we can talk about it in facilities.
There's a man sitting right back there. He dictates.
That's, remember, stadium stuff, he's just helping us.
You gotta do that impression.
What, okay.
I understand, Fred. We would, in the repair of the track, would have paid to remove the fence and install it back to the four-foot gate. Never thought about it.
Right.
So...
So, nothing's being voted on tonight. This is really just a discussion to let the full board know what, what was being discussed in facilities and what may need to move forward, but it sounds like we probably need to kick this, um, to back to a facilities committee.
Can do that.
Okay.
Did also have the protective fence at the front of the stands, keep somebody from falling underneath the front in, as, was viewed as a safety concern. Um, stands are elevated about four feet, and there's end of I-beams underneath. We get, we also got a quote for $12,050 that would cover the front of those, those stands. That should be done, if it gets pushed into something. Wanna take the flag pole?
Yeah, do you want me to take it?
My guess.
I was hoping you would.
Okay, I'll take. All right. They've, they've been talking about, uh, there was some questions asked. We wanna get a flag pole up. The, I think the flag pole itself for the US flag is, was it 40 feet, I think, and it, then there was two adjacent flag poles at 30 feet.
Something like five, maybe.
35 feet, and I think the total for all was $17,290. Is that what's on?
For the three of them, yeah.
For the, the three of them. So, that, we made no recommendation. That would be for board members to decide. Should have a flag pole.
It seems like something you could fundraise on pretty readily.
So, Mr. Nagle, did, did you want, did you want board input from, from these items? On which flag pole to go, which scenarios to go with? Discussion, table it?
What does the board wanna do with flag poles? Do we want flags up? There was an option a while back where Darryl showed a picture at the stadium, uh, the new scoreboard can show a, uh, a flag as well. Does the board wish to have flag poles?
I think it's gonna be a disgrace to America to not have a flag flying, just putting it on the board, but I'm not for putting it on the board. I want a flag pole.
As a retired veteran, I mean, the flag means something to me. That flag flapping and flying in the wind, flag goes by, salute, so I want the flag pole. Now, if you wanna do three, that's fine, but we need a flag pole that we can lower and put lights.
On flag pole or three?
That's what it comes down to, but I, I want that flag.
Okay.
It's the, option A in the quote.
Option A is for the one?
For one flag pole.
So, that's $6,975?
Correct.
And so, option B is basically that times three.
Okay, so do we need to put this on the, for a vote next meeting?
Well, so, wha- what I'd like is which option we, the, the board would like to see for action next week?
I'd like to see three. I need one for the American flag, one for the Pennsylvania flag, and then have one if, if you ever get a Greyhound flag, put it up there. I'd like to see three, I need one for the American flag, one for the Pennsylvania flag, and then have one if, if you ever get a Greyhound flag, put it up there, in my opinion.
Okay, so that's the 17, 290.
Team.
Plus installation.
I mean, I'm not opposed, I mean, I would, I really, I mean, we need the flag, I can support either option.
And the veterans group may be willing to support the posts. I, I like to look at least, see if they will support it.
But, I mean, I think, I think Fred, if we're looking to do, you know, sports there in the, in the fall, we probably would need to move a little bit quicker on it. Sorry, what?
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I'll support three flag pole, so. We need, we need your opinions.
Flag poles?
Yeah, I, I, like I said a lot.
Any other discussion, opinions?
I like flags.
Good to know.
My, my Eagle Scout project was installing a flag pole.
We're hired.
Let's save this 1,400 bucks, Dr. Goats.
But I, I mean, it's nice to know that as a backup, if they're not ready for the, like, the first football game, that we could show a video on our fancy new school, scoreboard of the American flag while we're singing the national anthem.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other, any other strong opinions, one way or the other? Cause it, cause if not, we plan on having the three, three flag pole option move forward for action at the next agenda. Okay?
Excuse me, on the fencing, we, we, we went through that. Did that include the gates? Did the fencing include the gates, the, uh, repair?
As far as I remember what Daryl said, that that was the gate, labor and everything.
I thought that there was a hundred and some thousand foot every, oh, the eight-foot gate, that, but that's out.
A hundred thousand, whatever it was, a hundred and.
It's up there.
Hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand. That was the entire fence.
And that's out.
We did, we did talk about gate repair, what did you have down there for that?
I think the, due to the fact that we had vandalism recently, we need to, I believe that those gates should be repaired. They don't have to be replaced, but repaired so they're lockable. And, and cameras.
So I think Daryl was looking for some quotes on that at the last Facilities Meeting. So, so just to summarize, press box is moving forward for action. Fence quote, we're going to circle back to Daryl? Or are, I, I wanna be clear, are we approving the eight-foot fence or we are, we're circling back to Daryl and the committee on that one?
I, I think, I think we should just do the $800 for the gate, I mean, I don't.
I think so too.
It's.
So I understand the savings.
I understand that too, but it's, in a $70 million budget, it's $200, so.
I mean, when you think about all of the even administrative time to go back to committee for people to sit in there, I mean, you literally should have just gotten the funds when you talk about $200 difference.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is press box moving forward, the $800 fence widening on action next time, and the three flag pole option moving forward out of Facilities Committee.
Correct.
And if anyone votes against it, then, you know, we'll have a vote.
Alright, but I'm, I'm asking about the gates, gates aren't included in this? Cause all, all the gates around that stadium, the eight-foot fence gate, all of them are broken.
We don't have that included in what we're talking about.
Daryl, I think, is looking to get information on that.
We'll have to get a separate price.
It's either the full, full board replace everything and the gates, but I, I believe from the Facilities Committee, he was going to look at just doing the gates.
Okay, alright.
There's another, there's another Facilities Meeting, June 5th, before the next board meet, so if something else comes up at that facilities, we can always.
I'm, I'm just worried about a copycat, going to the stadium, what they did to the building. But if you wanna wait, that's fine.
We are talking about, uh, facilities. We also brought up camera system conversation at, uh, facilities and facilities. It's going to recommend, and Daryl's going out for pricing, to get some cameras put on the potential light poles that have coming for the stadium or.
I, I think we're gonna rely on the camera companies to tell us where they should go.
So we have.
And then get us a cost on that.
For that, due to the hard work we just recently have, it'd be nice to catch that a little better.
So a little bit of a typo on my part in my update, thank you, Mr. Nagle. So, uh, Daryl put out the drawings that the students did to, to get pricing around what it would cost to build those buildings. So these are rough estimates. The, the belief is $1.5 million to build those buildings with $75,000 to $80,000 of design fees, so.
Not 700.
Not 750,000, sorry. So that, that is merely a discussion item at this point. I wanted to circle back for the board, report out from the Facilities Committee. As, as we look at fundraising through the foundation, you know, that, that's really kind of the, the first time we have a target number to, to work from, okay? Questions on that?
Can I add one question before we go to Dr. Stevens?
Yes.
Facilities Committee, I know, like, a year ago, two years ago or something, looked into replacing the floors at the elementary schools and the gyms. I was just curious if that is something, like, I know that we got as far as a, as a board or whatever, that we had someone come in and, like, take measurements and different things. Just curious if there's any update that we can maybe get to look at that. They're quite old and probably need a whole lot of, well, we need new floors, that's just my only uneducated opinion of walking in there and seeing them.
We, we can circle back to that in facilities, you know, as an item. I, I know we.
Remember it.
There were discussions there, I don't believe it was moved forward.
Yeah.
At that time, but we did get pricing.
So everybody understood, so there's the concession bathroom locker, that's the, that was inspired by what the students brought.
Yes, so what, what the students brought a few months, you know, were fairly evolved drawings, and we took those to the next step to do, to do pricing off those drawings and the cost to, to make them actual construction-ready documents.
Really cool.
One of the important things on the design side of things is Mrs. Fink has, if she has drawings and things like that, it, it does enable her to, a lot and secure, maybe secure some funding. But I gotta tell you, the pricing makes a hair in the back of my neck stand up for this stuff, so I'm not quite sure where I, what I think at the moment, I've been chewing on it.
Well, now, now we know the numbers, and, you know, that's, that's a giant leap for mankind.
You take your wife to a porter, John, you regret it.
Yeah. And, you know, Mr. Barman just pointed out, remember, we thought we were gonna spend 5.6 on the stadium, we actually spent like 3.9? You know, so these are potential bid things that, that could come back. You know, but, but as of the moment, we have a number and, you know, so maybe future decisions to talk about.
I guess what bothers me is that's, that's enough money to build three brick ranchers on a lot and buy the property. And we only got two, two buildings and we just need them to be half-empty and then the other half, half-house to have a stove and something to do hot dogs in.
Any other questions on that? Uh, Dr. Stevens? So I, we're coming to a, I think, and I don't wanna steal his thunder, kind of a, an inflection point on our phone system, one way or the other. So, you know, Dr. Stevens was tasked with coming up some, with some options. I will steal his thunder, one of them is really, really expensive, which is probably not viable, but we, we wanted to throw it on anyway.
Right now, our phone system's managed by the Capital Area Intermediate Unit. They had it, you know, for many years. At first, it saved us a lot of money and the phone service was great, but, you know, currently we're running into all kinds of issues. And, um, somebody changes offices, we get new hires, just getting a phone number changed or their, on their caller ID changed. It's taking a lot longer than it should. I'm getting reports every day, someone's like, I called somebody at home. I, they can, I can hear them, they can't hear me. We haven't been able to transfer calls, you know, with any consistency, you know, pretty much all of this school year. And just, you know, random classrooms, my phone's no longer working. I just hit the IU and they reset everything, then the phones start working again. Many districts in the IU have already started to go away from their phone system. I've just talked to someone that was at a meeting at the IU last week, a non-IT-related meeting, and the people there were complaining about the IU's phone service. They're just, not just us, it's, you know, everyone the IU's using or that's using the IU. For a few weeks, we lost access, if somebody would leave us a voicemail, we'd come right to our email. That feature disappeared for a few weeks because the IU hasn't been keeping their system updated. And when, you know, email system's updated, they no longer talk, so they had to do some updates. And they still have more updates that they need to do this summer. And when they do these updates, some of our phones are no longer compatible, so we're still gonna spend at least $16,000 on phones just to stay with the IU. You know, some of the features, we want to improve security, you know, all the speaker, all the phones in the classrooms have a speaker phone. If there's an emergency going on, the teacher can talk across the room and so forth, they don't have to be holding a handset. The classrooms will see the caller ID. And right now, they don't have that feature. Even if we stay with the IU with their upgrades, they're gonna upgrade to the E911 laws. So if somebody dials 911, right now, the dispatcher knows what building called, that's all they know. Now they will get the room number. And if we use one of the services that will allow us to use our cell phones as our district phone, we'll also get the GPS coordinates of where you're at. You know, emergency responders will have a better chance of finding somebody if you just dial 911 and can't talk.
Are there's new features with the IU or?
The 911 system is with the IU.
Okay.
The other features will be with the other two systems.
Okay.
One solution that's, you know, been popular in the IU is X-Tel. It's basically a system just like what we have, we have, you know, a phone system. Do everything we normally do, you know, the call, and you dial in, press this for the operator, this for this department, this for that department, just, you know, standard telephones. The expense is, you know, you have to buy new telephones everywhere. So the first year with the setup and the new telephones, we're looking like $93,000. After that, we're looking at $21,000 for our support and our long distance.
Dr. Stevens, just to circle back to the IU, we would be spending approximately $32,000 in the first year?
Yes.
16 and 16, and likely to get poor, continue to get poor service?
Correct. Another option that has been very popular is Microsoft Teams. Now that's, you know, a very full-featured phone system. You know, anybody, you know, uses, has a district, you know, email account and a phone account can log into any device. So they could, you know, log on their phone, that becomes their office phone. So that would allow, you know, when we're working from home, somebody could, you know, still receive calls to their office number. You know, if we have an emergency, we have to evacuate a building, the secretary can just sign in on a computer in another building. Parents can call right in. If a teacher needs to communicate with a parent after hours, they wouldn't have to give them their personal, you know, phone number. Everything would just look like it's coming from your office phone. And people have the option, if you think you might get an important call, you can, you know, turn it on so you, you would receive a call. But, you know, the teachers don't have to get, take, take calls to the work number after hours. Along with just getting the voicemail to email, this system will actually transcribe it. So if you're in a meeting or something, you could read the emails that have them to stop and play it or if, wait, you know, play the voicemail message. If we would lose the internet, if we, you know, the laptops that we're getting for all the staff, we can just connect them to a hotspot and use that as our classroom, or their office phone, or classroom phone, you know, to allow parents to still, you know, call in in an emergency. Right now, we have it locked, parents cannot call in, interrupt a teacher in the middle of the day. They've gotta call the office, and the office, you know, has to transfer them. There's some times where that's, you know, it would be nice if the teacher could turn it on for themselves after hours. With this system, it would be up to the teacher. Like this time of the day, I want people to call me, this time of the day I don't. And they could, you know, make that change at any point, giving the teachers more control. We can link it to our calendar. If you call, you know, somebody and they have this link to their calendar, and they're in a meeting, you'll get a message, they're in a meeting, or whatever greeting they wanna give you. If you call in during a holiday or a weekend, parents will get a different message. We can link it to the time of day, so they call in after hours, we can let them know this is after hours, you know. There's still possibility somebody's gonna take your call, but there's no guarantee since it's after hours or however we wanna do the greetings. It just gives us a lot more capabilities and options. You know, now with Microsoft, they're big things to make money. So, you know, the Teams telephone system, you know, the most cost-effective, effective option would be to get it with their upgraded license. Right now, we already have Microsoft Office license, so all the administrators, all the teachers can have telephone service and we use, you know, Microsoft Office applications and our networking equipment. We'd have to upgrade to a newer, well, a more expensive plan, almost more features, that would give us the telephone license. Now, it also includes a lot of security features. You know, if somebody sends an email in to a teacher, this system would then scan any of the links in it to make sure that link they're clicking on is not going to take them to a bad site. You know, better detection of threats coming in on the emails. We would get better reporting on my end, you know, if something's going on that looks suspicious. Stronger identity protection to, something makes it harder for people to try to hack into our accounts. Better e-discovery tools, we have more capabilities. And Microsoft has a, you know, data visualization tool that's, you have to have this license to use. So for the, you know, $17,900, that gives us our, the license for the phone, we do get, you know, some better security features. So with Microsoft, their pricing is definitely more difficult than the others, cause you have to buy the Teams license. Then you need to, you know, get a phone provider so that your Teams phones can actually go outside of other places with Teams. You're looking at a $3,000 setup and a $25,000 annual fee, that includes your support, your unlimited long distance. Looking at, you know, for the phones, the paging system adapters, we're looking at $89,000. For the first year, we're looking, you know, $135,000, then $43,000 every year after that. That's definitely the most cost, you know, most expensive system that we've looked at, but it does offer a lot of features. If you go to the next slide, it has it, you know, broken down, you know. Anything but staying with the IU would be a huge improvement.
And, and that's basically just to jump in, you know, I, I wanted Dr. Stevens to show you the Teams and the enhanced security that it comes with and, and the other features. You know, my hair's standing on the back of my neck, Mr. Nagle, at the, at the cost of that. But to, to Dr. Stevens' point, I'm not comfortable with, with what we're being provided with the IU and, and feel like the X-Tel is, is the administrative recommendation to upgrade our phone system. I mean, I, I don't know how much time you wanna spend telling how much time you spend and your staff dealing with phone issues and the number of things that, that teachers have to deal with where the phone's simply not working or a parent is calling in, it's going to voicemail and nobody knows it, so they're frustrated. This has been an ongoing problem for at least the last three years. And it's really kind of reaching a tipping point, you know, in my opinion, that we have to do something and, and, you know, we're, we're at that junction where the IU is, we need to upgrade. But, you know, to, to my mind, the administration recommendation, Dr. Stevens and I have talked, is, is the X-Tel.
Is that because it's cheaper?
Well, it's cheaper than Teams.
Oh, yeah.
It's more expensive than the IU, but I think we're getting what we're paying for, very much so. And, and not being able to have a reliable phone system is, is certainly a safety issue for, for me as well. That, you know, on top of the frustration and extra work it causes, we need a competent phone system for the district.
And we did look at other systems besides, you know, the traditional phone systems compared to the Teams phone systems, you know, and we went with the X-Tel, you know. Other districts have went with them, so we've got good references, their pricing model was the best of the ones that we looked at. You know, all the traditional phone systems, they pretty much have the same features. One district that we talked to, you know, they wished they would've went with Teams, or part of the people there wished they would've, but, you know, the, the big expense, you know, is, depends if you're in a situation. know, is, depends if you're in a situation where you're going to use those extra features.
And if the board as a whole, or five of you say, no, we do want Teams, that's great, we're happy to have it. The recommendation, though, is the middle competent phone system.
With, because I don't know, I'm trying to do math here. So the total for the Teams is 120-something-ish, 135,000? That's just like setup plus the $43,000.
And the new phones and we're getting us out of the gate, but it's still a hefty, hefty yearly cost moving forward from that.
Can XTEL, can you make sure that if we go with XTEL, that I don't call the school and get rerouted to Susquehanna High School like a couple of years ago? That would be great. So I appreciate all this. I know it's been an issue, like Mr. August said, for years, so I'm glad that we're willing, it looks like, to make the commitment to improve it.
And now is the time to jump ship with the IU?
Yeah.
With the upgrades. So that's why we're bringing it forward.
Why is it going down the last three years? Is it equipment? Is it the lines, the service? Is it all of it?
All of these phone systems are all internet-based, they're all going through our connection to the IU. Part of it, their staff that used to handle this retired. So, you know, ever since that person retired, the service is going downhill. They've outsourced a lot of this to another person, and I know they've had a lot of turnover in the area of the phone service. And part of the issue is they haven't keeping the system up to date. You know, so, you know, if they update it, is it going to work better? But if they update it, are they going to continue to update it? You know, our price is going to go up since, right now, the member districts are sharing it, but if, as more districts leave, the price is going to go up.
All right, so any other questions on phone system? All right, thank you, Dr. Stevens.
So that concludes the committee of the whole, and we are going to move into the planning and action meeting. I do just want to note that the board did meet in an executive session prior to the committee of the whole regarding personnel matters. So calling the planning and action meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jim Bard?
Here.
Mr. Mike Carey?
Here.
Mr. Levi Kressler?
Here.
Dr. Nathan Goats?
Here.
Dr. Michael Lyman?
Here.
Mr. Kirk Noggle?
Here.
Mr. Fred Scott?
Here.
Mr. Darren Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Steph Everly?
Here.
And Mr. Leo Blonk?
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we begin our deliberations this evening, let us once again be reminded of our duty to represent all of the children of this school community, regardless of age, sex, race, or creed, and regardless of need or ability. This meeting is being livestreamed and updated to the district's YouTube channel. May we now have a moment of silence to reflect on our thoughts, plans, and actions on behalf of the students in the Shippensburg Area School District. And may we also have a moment of silence for Gary Porter, 1956 graduate of Shippensburg Area High School, and Alan Lavelle, graduate of the Shippensburg Area Senior High School. Mr. August, are there any changes to this evening's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve item 1F, the agenda that's listed?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Not seeing any agenda items for citizens' comments. Student representatives?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I want to start off with some sports news. The softball team won their first playoff game against number four seed Donnico. I don't really feel badly about saying their name wrong, because we crushed them, winning seven to six. This set them up for their second district playoff game against Redland. They lost this game unfortunately, but they gave them a great fight, and they had a tremendous season. Congratulations. Track athletes had their district competition two weeks ago, and two of our greyhounds made it into states. These two individuals were Aiden Faust and Derek Lynch. Derek Lynch went on to become the PIAAA state silver medalist in the boys' AAA discus. He also went on then to clinch fourth in the finals. Aiden Faust finished 13th. Well done. In other news, graduation is just around the corner for our seniors. Graduation is taking place on June 3rd, I believe. Sash's Mini-Thon just released their total amount of money raised throughout this year at their all-night party, May 23rd through May 24th. And the total amount of money raised was a grand total of $21,755.39 for the four diamonds. This is unbelievable, and thank you to all the students who participated in donating money. And the finals are just now starting to take place at the high school. That's all for me.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
No official report at this time. I just would say, I would reiterate that the total for the Mini-Thon is amazing, you know, and it was a pretty fun evening, had the opportunity to spend some time there on Friday night. So congratulations to all the students that participated and, you know, went on to help a worthy cause.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Item 4A, the recommend approval of the minutes is presented and attached from the May 12, 2025 board meeting. Item 4B is the recommended approval of the following bills of payments and the general fund treasures report, which is attached. 4C is the authorized signature for the district funds. 4D is the special education renewal agreements with Mary Key School, which is $278.60 per day, and the extended school year rate of $185.76. The tuition for students is included in the board-approved budget. Yellow breaches, the total cost for the tuition is $38,894 per elementary student, and the total cost of transportation is $7,729 per student. And then the A Huber consulting, at a rate of $75 per hour with the annual cost not to exceed $55,000 annually. 4E is the operations and maintenance renewal agreements with Chamberlain Pest Control at a cost of $24,180. FMX at a cost of $16,852. GR Spinogel, the proposal is attached. Water treatment by design at $5,250. The modern fold proposal is attached. Rosenberry Septic Services, that proposal is also attached, and the RJ McCarville Associates proposal is also attached. And then item 4F, we have the professional and support. Resignations, transfers, leave of absence, promotions, change in days per year, new appointments, substitutes, the extended school year assistance, and the volunteer coach positions. Is there a motion to approve items 4A through 4F?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Goats, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion?
Just, we talked about Thon, and I saw that Ms. Janisch is one of the resignations. Is there someone else in?
We'll have to go through a posting process on that.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say thanks to Mama Lloyd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Action agenda, item 5A, the policies for approval. Administration recommends approval of the following draft policies. Is there a motion to approve item 5A?
So moved.
Motion made by Dr. Lyman, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 5B, the special ed coach job description. Administration recommends approval of the attached job description for the proposed special ed coach position. Is there a motion to approve item 5B?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Lyman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5C is the appointment of the financial advisors and bond counsel. The Board of School Directors of the Shippensburg Area School District does hereby authorize the administration to work with PFM Financial Advisors as financial advisors. Eckert, Siemens, Sharon, and Malott LLP as bound, bond counsel for the local solicitor in conjunction with the issuance of the general obligation. Is there a motion to approve item 5C?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Noggle?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 5D is the agreement with the government software services for the 25-26 school year. Administration will recommend approval of the attached agreement with the government software services to print and mail the district's real estate taxes. Is there a motion to approve item 5D?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Donovan, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carey, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5E, the Greyhound Foundation MOU. The administration recommends approval of the attached MOU between the Greyhound Foundation and Shippensburg Area School District. Is there a motion to approve item 5E?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Noggle, second? Second by Mr. Carey, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5F is the Shively Motor Drivers Education Lease Agreement. Administration recommends approval of the Driver Education Vehicle Lease Agreement with Shively Motors. Is there a motion to approve item 5F?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Noggle, Carey? Second?
So moved.
Aye, Mr. Noggle, thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are to the discussion agenda. We have 6A, I'll just read the titles. The job description for the head of maintenance. 6B is the mobile ag science lab agreement. 6C is the River Rock Academy contract for the secondary and elementary. 6D is the DiaCon Child, Family, and Community Ministries Doing Businesses DiaCon Youth Services Education Service Contract for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026. 6E is the authorization for payment of bills for June and July of 2025. 6F is the general property and liability insurances for '25 and '26. And 6G is the new phone systems. Any questions, comments on any of the discussion items? Which brings us to citizens' comments and Mr. Hess.
Hello, Tim Hess, 60 Dillon Drive, Shippensburg. I just wanted to touch a little bit on the concession locker room restroom building. For those of you that haven't been to that school in Newville, they just recently put in a building very similar to that. They have concessions. They actually have two separate concession places, two locker rooms. Now, they use theirs in the middle for where you go into the games to get your tickets and stuff. I'm not sure if they use other things for that, but a similar building like that, I was told they spent $4.5 million on. So the 1.5 is actually shocking to me. I thought it would be closer to three, 2.5 or 3 million. I'm kind of the opposite of Mr. Noggle, in that I'm wondering if we're not getting enough for that building. We are only going to do this one, this stadium's going to last this community 70, 50, 75 years if it's like the last place we were at. So I just want to make sure that we're doing it right. We're not doing it half, halfway. I'll go that way. I just want, like the scoreboard we got, great. Speaker system we got, great. I just don't, I don't know what that building includes. I didn't see the plans or anything, but I just want to make sure that we're doing it right. The 1.5 million is, when I heard what they spent, it's like nothing, so.
I don't disagree with you, Tim.
I mean, it's not nothing, but it's money. But it's also money that's not going to be coming out of the school district. This money's going to be coming from the foundation, the fundraising and stuff. I don't, I don't, at least unless you know something, I don't know, but I didn't think the money was coming from the school district at all. So I just want to make sure that we're doing it, let's do it right.
We want to do it right.
Yeah.
But it depends how long you want to wait.
Good point. And also the flagpole, three flagpoles would be great, but I also would like, I didn't hear this part, but it would be ideal if we were able to put some kind of lighting system, solar lighting system with them. Otherwise, we have to take them up and down every night. So if we have a lighting system, I believe the protocol is that if there's lights on it, you can leave them up. So that would be my suggestion, is to make sure that not only the three flagpoles, or the three flagpoles go up, but we have some kind of bright light on them, so people when driving by can see the light, see the flags flying, even when nobody's there. So that's it.
Thanks, Tim. Board comments. Mr. Scott?
Oh, me? Superintendent, are we having reserved seats at the stadium?
At this point, Fred, as we talked about in facilities, you know, we're going to turn it over to Mrs. Fonnas to deal with the first games. We may move to that, but her recommendation right now is to have a game there first and work out details, okay?
But, I mean, what, reserve sections, reserve section, I don't know what we have to work out.
How big that reserve section needs to be in terms of, remember, we have a lot of people at Memorial sat around the field, okay? So, you know, sizing up the reserve bleachers is going to be one part of it. You know, my conversations with Miss Fonnas have been that she would like the opportunity to have a game there first, and then put these things in once we've figured out how that works. So to answer your question, Fred, we can certainly move in that direction, we're probably going to move in that direction. We want some experience having some games there first, and then we can implement that. You know, currently, we've got a path to get to those games that we're still on, and so reserve seating is an important issue, but it's not at the top of the list right now for all the things that have to do with the stadium. But we will in due time give it consideration and do what we need to do with it.
We need to get that out to people, because if your husband and wife come to see your son, and the grandparents come to see your son, you expect to sit together. You get there and there's only room for two, or doom for three, that means someone else has to sit someplace else. That's why I'm concerned about the reserve seating. I'd like the people to know that they're not going to be able to sit together, because if it's open, dunes can sit anywhere they want.
So, again, all those details, you know, we need to put in the hands of Miss Fonnas, you know, we'll have a section for the band, we'll have a section for the students, all that stuff has to be worked out. Again, having an opportunity to see it live first and then make adjustments is what her recommendation is.
Wouldn't we know how many, I mean, the athletic office is the one that sells the tickets, so they would know how many that they typically sold minus, I mean, people that sat around the field in their lawn chairs, I mean, that's a whole different number. I mean, you could have a guessment, but they would know how many they initially sold as a starting point, to know if they needed to open that up for more, so I guess I'm not sure, like, what there is to work out, if you knew how many you sold, to open at least that number up.
I think that the people that are season ticket holders are going to want to come to the game, and they're going to, for the opening game, they're going to want to have their seats. So go back and count what we have sold before, I think, and you can section off an area and see if you put tickets up or seats up for sale, and see if you and, and see if you put tickets up or, uh, seats up for sale and see if you get a good take. And there they are, set it aside. I mean, this is a brand-new field, I'm a taxpayer.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issue with reserved seating, yeah, but I also don't run athletic events, so I would defer to, you know, the, the person that has that expertise first.
I believe, I believe a lot of people work really hard to get this stadium, and I believe a lot of people that want to come to football games, I'm not one of them, I like to come, but I'll stand along the sidelines, but let's get this, let's get this right and get the people who come every year, get them an area for them to sit in and guarantee that they're going to have a nice place to sit, uninterrupted by schoolkids and stuff like that for the first game. It'll be a big game.
Yeah. I mean, we have these people coming that are part of the community, come expect to see the game, and some of them may be donations, people going to donate toward the stadium or something else, then they're going to stand on the sideline. I don't, that's, why take a chance when you don't have to, like?
Again, I, I can't speak to, outside of Ms. Fonnas saying that, that's what her approach is. I mean, if it's the board's directive to do that, we can do it. But again, you know, like, I don't have the experience of running sporting events, she does.
I understand.
You know, so, I mean, that, that can certainly be something we work at, you know, to, to, to grow to, I guess. So, I mean, if it's the board's will that that happens, then, then I guess we have to, but, you know, I, I wonder, you know, what...
I think we've heard three pros to try to figure it out. I don't know if it was a definitive, but I think it's a suggestion to figure it out.
I'll, I'll have a conversation with Ms. Fonnas, okay?
Mr. Carey?
No, ma'am. I think Tim, Fred's going to check any, I think there's a line on blowing the dark flags for you, just in case.
Mr. Kressler?
Uh, first thing's a question, because I think I wrote the wrong date down. When is graduation?
June third.
June third.
For some reason, I had the fourth wrote down, so that goes into my next thing, now I know that. So I'm looking forward to graduation, now I'll actually be there, I won't be a day late now. But I look forward, as the seniors finish up everything, I look forward to, to the senior class of, of twenty twenty-five, joining the Greyhound alone. It's a pretty cool group, glad I'm a part of it. Last week, I was at third grade concerts that were here, really good stuff, thanks to all the teachers and administrators and all the parents for bringing your kids to that, always really cool. Couple other things, I saw that the Sharps came in fourth place at the Music in the Parks Festival that was Ann Hershey last week. And, uh, in general, I think, I was, I was at the Memorial Day Parade yesterday, I think the turnout seemed to be higher, looking down King Street, than in years past. So with that said, all those people that came got to see our middle school and high school marching bands do wonderfully in that. And I think that's it for me, thanks.
Mr. Bard?
I guess I got a question, maybe, more than a comment. Do we, I just run into this just last week, this week, no, I don't know. Do we teach any, our kids that are leaving here in our senior year, do we teach them the basics of life, like I know we do back in the sixth grade? I guess my question is, do we need to refresh that when they're in the twelfth grade as far as addressing an envelope, signing a check, writing out a check, that kind of stuff, signing their names? I, I know it's taught in fifth, sixth, seventh, I ain't sure exactly which grade, but I just run into that.
Is there a new class that juniors, not, not the juniors and seniors, but like the sophomores and freshmen will now have to take before they graduate about finance or something?
Well, we just approved that position, so that, that would be a good place for that, Jim.
Okay.
Although, you know, I, I had, writing out checks is not something like a lot of people do, a lot of kids are using online banking, you know, so... So, you know, we, we don't want to spend too much time writing out checks in financial literacy, but it, it is a skill that we can address, and that would be the place we would do.
Spend weeks on it, but I think a refresher course will bring it back to them. I think they got it, they just forgot it.
Well, we...
You know, it was five or six years ago, probably, when, when, when do you teach it, in sixth grade, seventh grade?
Uh, I, I don't have that exactly.
The second grad.
I mean, that's my guess, I don't know that, but, you know, just a, a day or two of refreshing would probably help.
Well, I think you came to the right place, because we just, we just approved that position and, and it fits nicely in there.
That's it.
All right, Dr. Goetz?
Uh, nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Nagle?
Nothing.
Dr. Lyman?
Nothing for me either.
Mr. Donovan?
Nothing. I just want to thank Mrs. Janisch for her years of dedication as serving as the Mini-Thon advisor. She's done an amazing job with the program, so I just want to thank her for that.
And that is all for me. So some information date savers, June fifth, we have the facility committee meeting, June ninth, the budget and finance committee, June third is the class of twenty twenty-five commencement ceremony, and June fifth is the last day of school.